And, uh, Mr. De Haney, I think we have a couple of briefings on hand.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Letitia Shelton, our finance director, will provide you an update on our interim financial statements.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of city council. I'm Letitia Shelton, the city's finance director here to present to you, um, our September interim financial statement. As we close out the first quarter of fiscal year '22, the city is in great financial position. Okay. As of September 30th, the general fund revenues of 1.21.9 million are 9.9% of the budget and exceeds the prior year by 19.1 million. Increases in revenues are attributed to general sales taxes exceeding the prior year's expenditure, um, revenues by 2.9 million, restaurant meal tax revenues exceeding prior year by 7.4 million, hotel room tax exceeding prior year by 2 million. General fund expenditures are 384.4 million or 28.9% of this year's budget. This is a 36.2 million dollar increase over prior year, primarily due to increases in transfers of 32.6 million to the capital project fund. Next slide. Here's a snapshot of our local revenues year-to-date through September compared to the previous two years. Next slide. General fund expenditures of 384.4 million or 28.9% of the current budget. This slide is just reflecting to you a more detailed outline of personnel costs. Uh, general fund, 58.3 million, public safety totaling 40.2 million, which are in line with our prior year two years. Next slide. This guide chart reflects a two-year average for general fund actual revenues and expenditures. As you can see, the actual revenues, which is the blue line, are 9.9% through September. They're tracking 1.1% higher than the prior two years. Actual expenditures of 28.9% are tracking 3.5% below the last two years. So in summary, total revenues for FY '22 are 19.1 million greater than the prior year. As I mentioned before, sales taxes were up 2.9 million, hotel taxes are up 2.2 million, and meal taxes are up 7.4 million. Total expenditures for FY '22 are 36.2 million greater than the prior year, and this is contributed to personnel costs and the transfers, again, of CIP, transfer of cash for CIP projects. Next slide. Next time would be before you is November 16th, excuse me. Um, and just to update, external auditors are here wrapping up their final week for our annual comprehensive financial report. They will be in front of you on December 7th to present their findings. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, please, by all means.
Could you go to Slide 4, please? On the personnel cost, are you able to disaggregate that into how much of that is compensatory time that we're booking as a future liability, and then how much of that amount was actually overtime versus direct payable salary on a regular work schedule? Is that discernible?
We can get that done for you.
Super. I appreciate that. And where would we show, and maybe we haven't shown it traditionally, and I apologize if I hadn't asked this question before, where we show what we plan for budgeted interest expense versus actually incurred interest expense, and the difference being the difference between the interest rate at which we issue debt and the interest rate that we budgeted the debt for?
So we don't currently show that. Currently, I am planning on doing that starting in October, basically because the first three months of the year, there's not a lot of fluctuation in the budget and actuals, and so we plan to start showing some projections in October.
Because that has been a good news story for us, and I often don't think we advertise to the public our good news stories. And then, more importantly, how do we redeploy those savings to meet an unmet public need or save it later for returning to the taxpayers as a dividend? I just think we have done really well with that, and I'd like to highlight that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. De Haney.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at the request of Councilwoman Henley, our stormwater team is going to give an update on our stormwater master plan.
While they're coming up, I'll just say they gave such an outstanding presentation at the Transition Area Committee a couple Thursday nights ago, and then this past Thursday night, we had a, uh, public information presentation on the Marsh Terraces Project. Uh, there's so much going on. I think there's a lot of information that we continually need to get. But this particular one with the stormwater master plan update and explaining the modeling and the master plan and how it all comes together with the projects we're doing, I just thought was such a great amount of information that we all need to be refreshed with, and I appreciate y'all doing it again.
Thank you, Mrs. Henley. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Uh, we're happy to be here today to give you an update on the stormwater master plan. The last update we gave to council was in February 2020. Since then, we have completed all of the stormwater modeling in the city's 15 drainage basins, and we are currently beginning the stormwater master planning process. Uh, some of the information you're going to see today is not new to some of you, but we thought it was very important to go over the process to create the models that identify areas that flood during certain storm events and how we use those models to develop the master plans that will identify future projects to mitigate that flooding. Today, I have with me CJ Bodnar, who heads up the Technical Services Section for the Stormwater Engineering Center. He is the subject matter expert for all things modeling and stormwater master planning, and he will be giving you the briefing today.
Thank you, Tony. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, hey, we're, uh, quick agenda. We're going to cover some background data of how we got to where we're at, what our process is for the master plan update, uh, the master plan development, and then give you a little demonstration of the model. I've remoted into my computer so we can actually show you the model and show you some of the results. Uh, from background data, uh, the last approved stormwater master plan for the city was back in 1990. Uh, I had just graduated college, so it tells you how long ago it was. Uh, and it was very rudimentary. It had the basic system, it had the large culverts, it had the canals, but it didn't show anything with any subdivision. It didn't look at the individual streets within any of the neighborhoods. So why do we do an update? We know what we have is in the way of an updated stormwater inventory. From that, we are able to create the models, which we are able to validate and calibrate to known storm events to accurately depict what the system will do during a rain event. Uh, from that, it shows us where the deficiencies are, and I'll point that out to you here in a minute in one of the slides. And from that, we can determine what needed improvements there need to be so we can create projects to actually address these issues. So for our master plan update, first thing starts with data collection, because your model's only as good as the information that you put into it. Uh, so we have since, uh, October of 2015 surveyed 23,000 stormwater structures within the city. We have another 70,000 to survey, so everything will be on the same datum, so everything will have the same elevation assigned to it. Uh, that way, it just makes it more accurate. Uh, we have also integrated the information from Norfolk, Chesapeake, JEB Little Creek, and Oceana into the model so we can accurately reflect what happens when the water from Virginia Beach enters Little Creek Base, or what happens when the water from Oceana comes into the city, to make sure we're accurately modeling that information. As Tony said, we finished all 15 of the models. Uh, the 14 basins north of the city, above where it says lower southern rivers, are all done with PC Swim. Uh, PC Swim is a user-enhanced version of the EPA Swim model, uh, which is a free program, uh, put out by the federal government. So the models will run in EPA Swim, whether they have two dimensions, the whole master model, which I'll show you here in a little bit, will run in EPA Swim. So we're not requiring anyone to go out and buy a program to be able to, uh, run the programs, to be able to do any analysis. The information we can provide the developers so they know exactly what the storm system is near their site, so they can accurately model what's going to happen with their system. The lower southern rivers, we use the MICE suite of programs, which is from the Danish Hydraulic Institute. The reason we did that is because PC Swim and EPA Swim, while they're going to do this in the future, right now do not allow you to put wind into the model. So you can't see what happens when that wind blows from the south at 12 miles an hour for five days, how it affects the lower southern rivers. The MICE model allows you to do that. So we were able to go in and create a MICE model of the entire southern rivers to be able to create an accurate representation of what happens during a storm event. Anyone can build a stormwater model. I had my 16-year-old daughter actually build one, or when she was 16, she built a model. You would not want to use it, uh, because she had no idea what she was doing other than what I told her. But in order to make sure the model's accurate, you want to validate and calibrate that model to a known storm event. So we make sure we get pictures from our citizens. They can send pictures to stormpicks@vbgov.com. We have one individual, every time it rains, he sends me pictures, and we appreciate that because it gives us the information we need when we update the model to be able to recalibrate, revalidate the model. We've run the model for the stormwater primary system, which we consider the 24-inch pipes and larger, the ditches, the canals, the lakes, they're all included in the model. We've run it for the 1, 2, 10, 25, 50, 100, and 500-year storm events, uh, with the requirements of the Public Works Design Standard Manual. So it includes the increased precipitation, it includes the joint probability tailwater analysis, uh, and it follows all of the information that we require anyone to do if they work in one of our models. Uh, we also have models for a foot and a half and three-foot of sea level rise. The reason I mentioned the calibration earlier is I wanted to show you some of the pictures that we received, and I'm a slide ahead of myself, sorry, uh, just to give you a comparison of today's model versus the model from 1990. Uh, the picture you see on the left was the model in 1990 of the Thalia Creek Basin. There was a total of 42 nodes and 50 pipes in the entire model. That model in 2018, for what we created, has 3184 nodes and almost 14,000 conduits, which would be pipes, overland flows, ditches, included in the model. So we greatly enhanced what the model shows compared to what it did in 1990, and we are in the process of working on a version 2.0 of the model, which will add the 15- and 18-inch pipes to the model, uh, which will give us even better accuracy of what the model will predict. So to the photos that I keep trying to jump to, uh, what we're able to do is we got this photo, and we had the survey crew go out and they shot the bottom of the black mailbox. So we know what the elevation of the mailbox is because we can see in the picture the water is to the bottom of the mailbox. We know what time and date that picture was taken. So we can actually look into the model and see what elevation the model predicts at that time and date, and what that elevation in the model compares to what the actual elevation is. Some other examples, the water's up to the stoop. The water, we can actually count the bricks on the front of the house and be able to make sure we get an accurate elevation of the water. And this one, we can actually look and see that the water at the house with the red truck is up to the flowerbed. So we had the survey crew go out, shoot the elevation in the flowerbed. On average, our models are matching elevation within plus or minus a half an inch. Uh, I presented this, uh, stormwater master plan at StormCon, which is the American Society of Civil Engineers National Conference, uh, back in September, and people were, said, "These are probably the best models they've seen in the country." So from, what can we do with the models? So from the master plan, we're able to get, uh, information as to where flooding occurs and what rainfall event flooding occurs. So does it happen when we have a two-inch storm, which, a two-year storm, which is 3.77 inches in a 24-hour period, or does it happen with a 100-year storm, which is 11.34 inches in a 24-hour period? So we run those models and see what point they start flooding, and I'm not going to pretend I can do this, so I'm going to walk over and point at the screen for a second. So what we call those is simulated flooding areas. So where you see these circles, you can see the legend here. Blue is zero to six inches, green is six to 12 inches, yellow is 12 to 18 inches, orange is 18 to 24 inches, and if you see red, that means there's more than 24 inches of water located in that area. What we're doing is comparing the elevation the model says the water rises to to what the actual ground elevation is from the city's digital elevation model. So we're able to actually see how deep that water is, and every time you see an area that has red, or green, or blue, we call that a simulated flooding area. Uh, we had to come up with a name that made sense, so we call them SFA's. And then what we look at with the master plan is how do we fix the flooding in this SFA? So we'll look at different alternatives, up to three for every SFA, to resolve the issue, whether that alternative is look for more storage, look for bigger pipes, do we need to put a pump in, how can we go about fixing this? SFA's, to resolve them to meet the requirements of the Public Works Design Standard Manual, which would require no water in the street for a 10-year storm with a foot and a half of sea level rise, and no flooding of the crown of the road is visible in a 100-year storm event with a foot and a half of sea level rise. If there's critical infrastructure, we look at the three-foot of sea level rise. So we establish a set of criteria for how do we compare alternatives to decide which alternative is going to be best. We didn't do that just in the Public Works Stormwater Engineering Center. We included the city manager's office, public utilities, planning, emergency management. Uh, you can see the list up there of all, and all of them had input into how we create this criteria so that we would be able to weight the scoring to make sure we get an objective evaluation of each alternative. Because if I ask Mr. Belucci, "I've got a project that'll fix flooding on your street," and I ask Mr. Holcomb, "I've got a project, which one do you think Mr. Holcomb's going to pick?" He's going to want to pick the one that fixes flooding on his street. Mr. Belucci would do the same. So we want to come up with an objective set of criteria that allows us to be able to evaluate the alternatives against each other, and the highest-ranking alternative then becomes a project. So the flow chart, at the top, you start with your simulated flooding areas, however many thousand there may be. You evaluate each alternative, the alternative becomes a project. The projects then go through a project criteria that allows us to be able to see which project provides the greatest benefit for the city. So the projects that rank higher would be the projects we would look to go first. We are working on trying to make sure we have projects in every single district within the city so that we can make sure we're helping everyone in the city be able to have flood relief as we move forward. So for our example, we did the Linkhorn Bay Drainage Area, which is what you see on Drainage Basin, which is the map you see up there on the right. Uh, it was the smallest of our drainage basins, which is why we picked it for our example. And there, you see circled in pink is the Sea-Tac neighborhood. And the model shows that in a 25-year storm, that neighborhood starts to see flooding, uh, including some structural flooding. So we looked at two different alternatives. There's a vacant parcel in there. Let's go in, let's build a pond, run the water to the pond, and then run the water out to Great Neck, or we increase the pipe sizes along Bird Neck Road and discharge that to Great Neck Creek. The project that ranked higher, which was the running the pipe along Bird Neck Road, uh, then became the project, and we can show you here. This is what the flooding is in Sea-Tac during a 100-year storm before we make any improvements. We then can take those improvements, put them into the model, rerun the model, and we can see that is the extent of the flooding after we build the improvements that are proposed. So you're able to look at it on a side-by-side comparison. We're able to keep all structures so they're not flooding. If the 10-year storm does not have water in the streets, it meets the Public Works Design Standard Manual. So we take that project and come up with a budget to be able to propose to you when we want to build that project, which this is included in the bond referendum, to go ahead and be able, once it's funded, to go ahead and start design. This is our schedule right now of where we are with preparing. We have finished the Linkhorn Bay, uh, master plan. We are finishing up the West Net Creek master plan. Uh, Broadbay, Little Creek, and Dam Neck are underway, and then the rest of the schedule proceeds forward with having us finished in February of 2024. Now I'm going to step over to my computer, to the computer and bring mine up.
Hey CJ, I turned that microphone on for you.
Okay.
Just switch it over for you.
Thank you, Amanda. So let me see here. So this is actually the PC Swim model. Is that better? Okay. Uh, this is actually the PC Swim model for the entire city. What we've done is taken each individual drainage basin and combined them into one model, uh, because we know water doesn't know any boundaries. We know that water along Thalia Road can run, or I'm sorry, along Newtown Road can run into Mr. Jones's district, or can run into Ms. Wooton's district, or Mr. Holcomb's district. So we want to make sure we're accurately depicting what that model does. Uh, I'm going to zoom in here to the northern part of the city here. And what you see on the right side of the screen here, this is Eastern Shore Drive, which is included as part of the bond referendum. And then this is the Ocean Park neighborhood on the west end of the Lesnar Bridge. Uh, the symbols in here, the red triangles are just outfalls. That's where the water discharges to a tidal boundary. The green represents storage within each one of the subcatchments, which is an area that drains to a certain location. The blue are junction nodes that just represent manholes or structures along the flow path. Uh, the green are overland flow paths, and yellow is pipes. And what I can show you from this is this is that same area, and this is what the model shows us happens in Eastern Shore Drive on a 10-year storm event, under current conditions. Uh, so you can see all the flooding that occurs along Shore Drive. You can see the flooding that occurs in the Cape, along the Cape Henry Ditch. But the good part is because this is all done with PC Swim, we're able to create GIS layers that I can change it and show you, here's what happens during a 100-year storm event. So we're able to see more flooding along the road. We start seeing flooding along Shore Drive, on the western sides of Shore Drive. We can also show you what happens with a foot and a half of sea level rise for both the 10-year storm, and then what happens with the 100-year storm with a foot and a half of sea level rise. And you can start seeing the extents of the problems that we're looking to try to address. One of the things we've done with the models is we're able to go through and determine that, yes, we can meet the Public Works Design Standard Manual with the design, but of any circumstance that we designed something, we want to make sure that we are not going to have structural flooding in any building. To give you two examples that we had, just to show you real quick, uh, here's Windsor Woods. Uh, these are two projects out of the bond referendum. So for Windsor Woods, this is, uh, what happens during a 100-year storm currently in Windsor Woods before we make any of the improvements that are in the bond referendum. This is what happens when you get to what's in the bond referendum for the improvements. And then to give you the side-by-side comparison of those, sorry, it's so slow. It's working through my computer at the office, so, but it gives you an idea of the type of improvements that we can make and be able to make sure that we are making the improvements that we're suggesting that we'll make. And then finally, the other one I wanted to show you was the West Net Creek Bridge. So this is the flooding depths that happened on a 100-year storm along West Net Creek before we do, uh, the project that's in the bond referendum. This is the extent of flooding that you see afterwards. And to give you the side-by-side comparison of that. I don't know why that blows up. I just wanted to be able to go through and show you the extents of flooding reduction that we're seeing by putting in the structure at the West Net Creek Bridge. And I am available for any questions that you all may have.
Any questions at this point? Mr. Moss?
I just have a couple of observations. But first of all, I think the slide, which, you know, we talked about, which I'm talking out to the public, and I'm sure the rest of you are as well, is the one that he showed in here where it shows how well the model on an aggregate basis does predict real-life events.
Yes, sir.
I know a lot of questions, I don't know if you've offered on them, out there, is, you know, are you over-defining the problem, or we're not, or really overstating the threat, is what I get. And the other one is, how do you know what you're proposing in the projects that they're really going to deliver the result? And I can understand the doubting Thomas thing. I think this, I talked to the stuff here, so this is good information for the public that's watching. The 21 projects really have been thought out. We know they will work, and we could get one of these storms, you can get three 100-year storms in one year, you can get none for 10 years, and then get a 500-year flood storm. So I don't think in any way, when we've been out on the hump, stomp, that we have been in any way overstating the threat and the danger that we face to our homes and our businesses from flooding. And I would appeal to those watching who still haven't voted, that it's in their best interest, really, to vote, to vote, yes, this council has done its homework. The staff really has done the heavy lifting, and the science is clear, and you've all done a great job. And I know Mr. Jones and I have been participating in the Friday weekly Stormwater Regulations Amendments, and if this bond referendum does pass, we're going to be able to, because it deals with the 1.5-foot of sea level rise, we can get away from that free board filling for two feet, and that makes housing more affordable and also makes us more attractive for economic development. So there's a lot at stake. I know, Mr. Mayor, you've spoken about it often, and I appreciate it. There's a lot at stake in this bond referendum, and I know it's a big ask in our economically tight times. But what they say, when business is bad, do more marketing. Well, when times might be tough, invest in public infrastructure, because in the end, it's protecting your property. And I do appreciate your work, and I'm glad, for the first time, we've seen this model, and I look forward when we can integrate that with our digital thing and do the 3D display, because I know that's doable, and people can see over the time lapse as that water rises and how quickly it happens. I think people would be very surprised that, uh, once it happens, it's too late to prevent it. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else? Ms. Henley?
Well, I know that, you know, when we, I guess, started talking about the flooding and the projects and so forth, I was hearing a lot from people of, well, how do we know that what we're going to do is going to work? And I think it's so important that our public understands the level of work that's been going on in the last five years with the data collection aspect of it, uh, to be able to make certain that we are at a point where we feel pretty confident that what we're recommending that we do is going to actually have the result that we want. And I just think this presentation, uh, does such a great job in presenting to the public, and I hope we have a good viewership of this presentation, because I think it's so important for all of our public to realize the depth of the, uh, work that's gone into all of this and to coming up with these 21 projects. And I really appreciate you making that presentation again.
No problem.
I've seen it twice. Now, if I get it another couple of times, I might be able to ask a good question, but it's so much to grasp, and I'm just so thankful that we've got folks that we've got working in the engineering department who understand all of this and are able to do this for us. Would you mind just bringing a little bit of attention to this piece of paper that you all have? This is another project that's in the, um, bond referendum as green infrastructure. This would be one of the green infrastructure projects, and I thought this handout has so much good information here. But do you mind, real quickly, just one more time, explaining this? Because this is the attempt to control that wind tide. Uh, it's different from the other kinds of projects because it's going to be a preventive kind of thing. But I think the fact that our staff was so forward-thinking on this project, that they actually went out and got a federal grant for us last year at this time, so they could be, at this point, designing this project. And it's really exciting that we are this far along. If y'all don't mind hearing him tell you a little bit about it, I think it's great.
This is deservedly music to Ms. Henley's ears.
Please, thank you.
Yes, sir. Last Thursday, we had a, uh, public information meeting for the citizens for the Marsh Terrace Project in Back Bay. It's a pilot project. Uh, Marsh terraces have been built in the Gulf Coast for about 20 years now, uh, and have shown success on being able to slow down the speed of the water and also reduce the amount of erosion that's occurring. The problem with the erosion is it creates turbidity in the water, which means the sunlight can't get through to let the grasses grow. So the idea here is to go back and restore about 200 acres of the wetlands that used to be in Back Bay. Uh, we have a map from 1869 that shows the coastal boundary of Back Bay in 1869, and when we overlay it now, you can see how much area has actually been lost. So the idea is go back and restore the island, uh, and... So the idea is go back and restore the island and be able to slow down that water that right now could just push right up through Back Bay, and in five days, it'll raise the elevation in the north part of Back Bay by a foot and a half. Well, when you've got roads that are elevation one, a foot and a half of water doesn't help us too much. So the idea is to be able to slow that down, so that takes about nine days for that water to be able to rise a foot and a half. And looking through the historical wind records for Oceana Duck, the Norfolk Airport, there has never been a period where nine straight days, the wind has blown from the south. So we're looking forward to this project, and if this project's a success, we're going to look to be able to restore additional areas down in the Back Bay.
And I think it's important to know that we are working with North Carolina on this, and they're very interested in their portion, as well as, as other look. But when we were talking about possibly doing a referendum last year, some of you remember, I wasn't on that, because we didn't have anything for the southern watershed that we thought would work. But that additional work, and now this, I think we really do have something that's got some, some good possibility of helping control that water here in Back Bay. And then you look at that West Net Bridge project to help with, with that area. I think we do have some great projects that will work in the southern watersheds, and, and I really appreciate all the work that you all have done. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Rouse, and then Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Tony, for your great presentation.
CJ.
CJ, sorry, for your presentation. Listen, yeah, Estillers Mask threw me off. But I, I had a question. I was wondering, did you all, talking about marsh replenishment and down in the, in the Gulf, I know I visited LSU, and they have a great model, I mean, a huge indoor, indoor facility where they show you the Mississippi Basin from here all the way up to Wisconsin. And they show you the, basically how marsh replenishment and replenishment of certain drainage canals and, and waterways, how that helps. Did, did we, you know, did you, you look at that as a reference, or have we, do we have partnerships there where we can see how, using that model, how that would help here?
That, that actually was one of the references. We, we saw a presentation by LSU at a, at a conference in Richmond, I think it was two years, two, three years ago. And that put the, the thought in our mind that, well, if it works on the Gulf Coast, why wouldn't it work in Back Bay?
Yeah.
And that's what led us down this path, and with our partners, Arkansas and Dewberry, we've managed to move forward to getting the grant from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation to actually, we will, at this point, get all the way through final design of the project with what's already in a work order.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Moss?
I just wanted to share what was in the city manager's packet, because we've been talking about FEMA issuing their new flood rates. I know that's been a concern, because that affects a lot of people in our community, and that they can go up 18% per year into the foreseeable future. But the good news in all that was that now the discount that used to only apply to people in the non-premium risk areas now applies to everyone. And I think that number was up, was it, was it 13, 14? I forget the actual number you had in there, the percentage discount that people get. But it did say the average increase was $10 to $100 a month. So my point being, and how it ties back, is that the bond referendum, absent that, the exposure that these people have in these areas that we're going to be protecting are going to start seeing phenomenal increases that compound in their flood insurance. And people that try to buy their homes are going to have to have it, because the maps have been redone. So really, there's a lot of other reasons, other than just your own thing, but there's another cost you'll pay. And some of these things will move these things out of risk to that premium risk level, which is the lowest possible payment. So I think there's just a lot of goodness here, but there's a cost to be paid, one way or the other. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? And if I could just say, I know you lament graduating college in 1990. Your aging mayor graduated in 1976, and that was after four years in the USMC, you know, when Rocky, Uncle Sam's misguided children, as we were known back then. So, you know, you were far more ahead of the curve. You guys actually had computers and everything.
Yes, sir, we did. Luckily, there was not an internet.
Yeah, we had, we had those little slide rules and everything, and I'll tell you what, we had to get up and change the TV ourselves and everything. How far we have come.
Yes, sir.
And let me just say, I can't minimize the importance. Hurricane Matthew was a wake-up, wake-up call to this city. And since that time, stormwater and, you know, all the mitigation that we've been talking about has become one of the highest priorities, along with public safety and schools, in the city of Virginia Beach. And we have been moving forward diligently, to the point where we are, have been dedicating more than, than I believe historically than we ever did on this situation. And to reiterate the importance of this, first of all, even when you look at those models, you know, especially, you know, within the city confines and everywhere, those are people that are affected, that are residents right there, and that's the number-one concern. But the other thing is, too, that, you know, and I think the important thing is, Mr. Moss has brought out, maybe your neighborhood isn't flooding, but other peoples are. And if you've got to get to work, you may have to go through those neighborhoods. So I think that we're all in this catchment area, ourselves, everyone in the city, all 460,000 people, have invested interest into looking at what we're doing. Now, you know, you know, given what I hope is not the failure of the referendum, it's just going to take longer to do, maybe decades. And, you know, that's not going to be fair to anyone. And by, I think, you know, Mr. Moss, if I'm correct, you bring up what this referendum does, does significantly, is accelerate the process to get us to a point of homeostasis. And, you know, I think the public also has, this is not just going to be a 10-year fix, 50-year fix, this is going to be in perpetuity, lifetime fix, that we're going to have to keep on addressing. And, you know, the future is now, when it comes to this. And I think that, you know, we as a council are unified in the fact that, you know, we need this, you know, you know, for our operation for the quality of life that the people of Virginia Beach are accustomed to. And, you know, it's, you know, I think that it's a very, very important thing. I want to thank you particularly for your expertise and all the engineers that have gotten together. You know, you know, Mrs. Henley brings up the Dewberry study that we participated in, that, you know, I'll tell you what, that was an expensive ticket, you know, that we're looking at. But once again, you know, the first, journey of a first step of a thousand miles begins with the first step, and I think it's going to be the first Tuesday in November, that hopefully the public will put their confidence on us, and within a reasonable time, they're going to see some tangible benefits. So I just wanted to thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, moving along. Okay, we are at, any council initiatives to bring forward at this time? How about any council comments? Okay, yeah, Ms. Wood.
I just wanted to mention something very briefly that I'm working on. It's in, in relation to what we discussed during our retreat some time ago, just about our young adult entrepreneurs. And so I'm working on, and the first Ignite Pitch Competition that will be marketed and information provided to the public. This particular event is going to showcase some of our young adults in the region, in this area, and the ideas that they have, because as we know, our, our future is our youth, our youth are now, and they have great ideas and businesses that need to be showcased. And this Ignite event will do so. It's going to take place on November 20th, from 8:30 to 12:30, and additional information will be forthcoming.
Oh, thank you. And Mr. Berluci, along that line, could I invite you to discuss, you know, the honor that Dr. Reddick's got, which I think falls in line with what Ms. Wood does? And I see the potential of a collaboration here.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yesterday, the region celebrated one of our Hampton Roads' own most active and successful entrepreneurs and community leaders, and that's Dr. Angela Reddicks. At an event hosted at the Chrysler Museum of Art, Dr. Reddick's received a variety of accolades from federal, state, and local government officials, all in recognition of her work as an entrepreneur, as a business leader. But I think most substantially for her work in the community, to uplift and empower young people, particularly young people of color. She's the founder of an organization called Invision Lead Grow, which is a nonprofit dedicated to promoting entrepreneurism and business leadership for young girls. And she's not only in Hampton Roads, but around the country. And in addition to her work in the community, of course, Dr. Reddick's is an entrepreneur herself and employs many, many people throughout Hampton Roads and inspired countless others. I think Mayor Alexander, at the presentation yesterday, said he's never seen anyone receive so many accolades and proclamations in one place at one time. So it was a historic moment, a very proud moment. Dr. Reddick's is a citizen of the world. She serves Hampton Roads, but she lives in Virginia Beach. And I hope that she knows, and the public knows, not only how proud we all, all are of her, but, but, but how grateful we are for her impact to the community. And I should say, all of this was in recognition of her being named to Ebony Magazine's 75th Anniversary Power 100 List. And Mayor, I think a lot of credit goes to you for, I think, exceeding all of the proclamations and declarations that day by naming yesterday, October 18th, as Dr. Angela D. Reddick's Day in the city of Virginia Beach. So thank you for that, and congratulations to Dr. Reddick's, and thanks again for all of her remarkable achievements and contributions.
And in speaking, and thank you very much for hosting that event, and, you know, just say that, you know, we're, we've got a point of pride that we have a lot of intellectual capital that lives right in this city. And combined with the noble efforts that Council Lady Woodin is doing, you know, she did express an interest, you know, to, you know, for maybe some potential collaboration. And, you know, I tell you what I think, you know, would be, it would be a marvelous get-together. Just so you know, they documented that she had a thousand of the people that she worked with have become millionaires. And she started, basically in middle school, from what I understand, and then when she starts to nurture them. But once again, you know, even entrepreneurship, it's even, you know, if you recall when we opened up the, the Hive, there was a 15, young 15-year-old, you know, girl there that was getting ready to launch her own business. And, you know, this is the kind of spirit of cooperation and, you know, collegiality that could really take, you know, this to the, you know, next thing. But I, once again, I employ, applaud you for your Ignite series, but especially focusing on the young entrepreneurs that are, you know, that, you know, give them the pathway to success. I thank you.
Sure, may I say?
Please.
You know, I, I appreciate what Council Member Berluci and the mayor said. I think we're all thinking on the same lines, because I have had an opportunity to talk with Dr. Reddick's, and we would like to kind of collaborate on some things. So we'll continue that conversation. I wasn't aware about that event that took place, but certainly do congratulate Dr. Reddick's for all that she's done and who she is, certainly a prominent leader within the city of Virginia Beach. Thank you very much.
No, that's great. And, you know, this is, once again, you know, our council being proactive. Ms. Henley?
When you finish that, I was just going to mention something that I'm working on. I've mentioned it to some of you, but I don't want a chance to lose this opportunity to remind you that, well, if you read your Independent News Edition for this week, he does a great article about the event that we're having in the community to raise funds to restore the Pleasant Ridge School. This is a one-room schoolhouse. We talk about preserving history. This is your chance to help us out. Actually, we did this first 30 years ago, in just the community, raising money to, to restore this building, which has a great history. Started out as the large room of a two-room school, and then became the one-room school that served in this location and served the African-American children until 1955, when Seaboard opened. But anyway, back 30 years ago, we had a fundraising dinner, raised some money to, because it was really crumbling. And, but in the process, we ran out of money. And at that time, Frank Drew was a sheriff, and he offered, he asked us if he could finish it, so we said, by all means. And so that's the way, the way this got to be a partnership with the Sheriff's Department, with what we're doing now. We found out at that time that his, his folks really took a lot of pride in the work. So we're kind of repeating that. We're, the, the school building needs some, some work, and so we're having a fundraising dinner in two weeks, October 30th. So for just $20, you can get a great barbecue dinner prepared by the Creeds Ruine Club, and all the profits will go to restore the Pleasant Ridge School again. And I see the sheriff came in, and thank him very much for offering his workforce, because it's, it's a great win-win for them as well. And maybe Rocky might want to mention what you all plan to do. And I just will say, there are tickets still available, and for just $20, you can restore history and help us with this project as well, and get a great barbecue dinner, Bob. It's good stuff.
No, yeah, I work for food. Yes.
I know, that's why. Rocky, did you want to comment on?
I just echo what you say, Ms. Henley. It's a good project, and, and hope we can raise the money to get it fixed.
Great. Anyone else? Mr. Moss?
Do you want council comments?
Oh, yeah, we're on council comments.
I have three comments to make. One, I want to revisit one I've made before. I think the school board has not yet adopted their policy of controlling free speech yet. But when they do, I would like to have a briefing to know where their control of the parking lot stops and where ours start, and how we're going to administer that whole process. That is something we're going to have to address. So I want to make sure that hasn't been lost, and we can, we can address that. Two, I also mentioned, I hope that for the five-year forecast in November, that we could look at the sales that took place between the 1st of January and the 30th of June, to look at the variance between the recorded sales price and the property tax assessment, so we could get at least an inclination of what the trend is relative to how much our tax base has grown from the July 1 book value, and what impact that might have on guidance that we issue. And this last issue, I'm not asking, I don't have enough of the facts, but I have asked the city manager for some background information relative to a speaker at a public event in a public facility that I think doesn't represent, at least doesn't represent my views about the community. And when I get those facts, I, I plan to engage the council about that, just so you'll know the head up. And I did share with all of you, by email, that late-breaking inclusionary housing statute that other cities are asking us to endorse. I think I sent that to everyone, hope you all got it. But I think that's come late in the game, and I don't think that should be injected into our process, because I think that needs a lot of homework and public discussion before it's adopted. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? You know, just, you know, a quick update on a couple of things pursuant to a conversation we had with Senator Kane's, you know, office this morning. We also had discussions with Congress Lady Luria and Senator Warner pursuant to finding $20 million to help with the Nemo Parkway situation. And it seems to be moving forward. There were some environmental groups, you know, that raised some concerns that we are addressing. But part of the discussion, I assured that Mrs. Henley was going, watching this diligently, and, you know, that we are going to interact and make sure that any environmental concerns that are brought forward, you know, will be addressed. And Ms. Wood, the other thing is, they did notify us that as of last night, the Senate, the Senate is moving forward on the $6 million for Center Real Phase 3. So hopefully, we're going to, they're going to have that resolved, too. And I'm sorry I didn't tell you that before, but I just want to let you know, you know, we are, you know, engaged in that resolve, okay? Okay, at this point, how about council agenda review? Vice Lady Wilson is out of town on a vacation, and Mr. Jones has volunteered to step forward.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under ordinances and resolutions, item seven, we do have speakers. Is that correct?
Yes, and Mr. Councilmember Jones, we also have two speakers now on K2 as well, under ordinances. ordinances.
All right, on the items one, three, four, five, and six, under ordinances, does anybody have any of those they want to pull? Or do anybody have any other comments about them?
Number six, I'll be abstaining for number six.
Okay.
And which one were we pulling? Speakers? Two?
Item seven.
Seven. All righty.
K2 also, two also.
Did you say, did you have something, Mr. Tower?
No, I was just going to say, did Ms. Barnes say we're also pulling two?
Yes.
Okay, two and seven.
We have two speakers on number two as well.
I've got that.
Yes.
All right, and under planning, item one, Murphy's of Virginia Beach, Stephen Ewan Yi Family LLC. For a special exception for alternative compliance rate, convert a portion of parking lot into permanent outdoor space dining area and space and new uses, 2914 Pacific Avenue, Beach District. Mr. Tower?
Yeah, I'd like to pull that one, please.
Okay.
They don't have any speakers.
Item two, Virginia Beach Development Authority.
Any speakers on?
Virginia Beach Development Authority and Frobel LLC for a modification of proffers to a conditional change of zoning, update, design criteria, a portion of corporate landing, business park, District 7, Princess Anne. Ms. Henley?
I'm still having a terrible time with changing these, these setbacks from the residential areas and General Booth. I don't like that at all.
I'm voting no, I don't like it.
I'm, I'm having a terrible time with that. So if someone else would like to make this motion?
Okay, so, Mr. Moss, you're voting no?
That is correct.
Yeah. Ms. Henley, you, you are going to leave it to somebody else? Is that it? Do we have any speakers?
No, sir.
You know, I know they sent the, the notice out to all of the property owners and so forth, but when it, when it actually happens, if it gets this close to an individual's house, or like I say, even General Booth Boulevard, 30 feet is not much setback. And especially the day that we're honoring Reva, I have a terrible time doing this to General Booth Boulevard. That was her road. You want to?
Okay, Mr. Adams, do you have any clarification on this?
I would just say that we're, if it, if it's Ms. Henley in the, in the body's will, we're happy to move forward without, with the rest of the plan, without the amendment to the, to the setbacks. It's a, I, I know that we don't like to shoot from the hip here, but I would just tell you in conversation with the authority and with, with my own staff, that is, that is not what this deal's about. So if it's, if, if the best way forward is without that, we would, we take that as friendly.
And if I make a motion to approve it, but leave the setback for building setbacks that residential neighborhoods at 75 feet and the minimum building and parking lot setback from General Booth at 75 feet, that would work. Okay, I'll make it with that motion.
Okay.
And I'm a yes.
And then he'll be a yes.
Don't you love it when a plan comes together?
Oh, great. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Okay, let me have those set, those, those changes though.
Okay.
Is that going to be on consent?
Yes, please. Yes, it can be.
Yeah. Yeah, with the modifications.
As modified, I'll just say.
Yeah, okay, good. That'll work. Thank you.
We may, I, I need to, I need to look at my book, but since we're changing proffers...
It's a modification of proffers. Let me look, Mark.
It's a part of the ordinance, a part of the design change. I'm not sure that it's considered a proffer. It's...
We're agreeing not to change it.
Yeah, we're leaving it as it is, so.
There's a proffer agreement included.
I will, I will, I will look at it during the break and tell you what the correct process is. If it's just changing the guidelines that are the subject of the proffer, we're probably okay. But if it requires a change in the terms of the proffer, Bobby may be able to answer the question. While you're doing that, my question would be, how could a proffer that's been submitted to change it supplant our ability to maintain the status quo? It doesn't. It may just mean that you have to advertise it, the change.
I hope not. I believe this goes along with the conversation we had earlier, Mr. Stiles. I think because the proffer exists and as long as the applicant's willing to remove it, then the existing proffer would stay in place. And so it's not a new proffer.
Okay.
Thank you. So you've got to tell me how to word this one?
We'll, we'll, we'll come up with the correct wording for you for the formal session.
Formal session?
Yes, sir.
Great.
Thank you. All right, and the next two items, three and four, the applicants are going to be here to do the withdrawal, so we, we won't put that on the consent, but wait for them to come in.
Actually, by, Ms. Councilmember Jones, we have speakers on three and four, so it'll have to be heard.
Okay.
And I have a letter to read on four.
Okay.
I believe it will be on three and four. Okay, three and four. Oh, that's right. Thank you. I have a letter to read on three and four. I can vote, but I have a letter I have to read.
Okay, not a problem.
Okay. Mayor, getting back to ordinances, I will be abstaining on item seven. I'm waiting on an opinion that I haven't received yet, so I will be abstaining on item number seven.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're abstaining on seven?
Yes. K7. K7.
And what? Just seven?
Just K7. Yes.
All right, Mr. Jones, thank you very much. Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by Section 2.23711A, Code of Virginia, as amended for the following reasons. First, publicly held property. Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for the purpose of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, Beach District, Lynnhaven District, Princess, Beach and Princess Anne Districts. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiation and litigating posture of the public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A7. And that would be Adams Outdoor Advertising versus City of Virginia Beach and the City of Virginia Beach versus W.C. Capital LLC. Public contract, discussions of the award of a public contract involving the expenditures of public funds and the discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or the negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237A29, and that would be Atlantic Park. And then personnel matters, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public members, officers, appointees, and employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A1. And that would be council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Vote is open.
Ten to zero. You recess into closed session.
Okay, we are recessed into closed.